That's 2:30, let's get started.
Yeah, I'll kick it off again. Commissioners, we had a study session at fire station number three a while back and one of the topics of conversation was EMS transfers, among other things, and not just because it was a topic then, but it's a topic for both the fire department and the hospital, trying to coordinate all that. And we've really been trying to look at staffing and the impacts of EMS transfers and scheduling and overtime, those type of things. And so, a while back, Chief Royce, there he is, started researching possible consultants that could help us look at EMS deployment and kind of look at that issue and see if there's any operational efficiencies to be gained or any observations that they could share. So we contracted with Harold Cohen with TriData and worked with him. The fire department, as I think you probably saw in the study session that we had previously, had a lot of data, did some really good data tracking in between, in coordination with the fire department and the hospital and our emergency services director, Dr. Harrington. Mr. Cohen had ongoing conversations and put together the deployment study that you received in the packet, and they're here to give you an overview of that today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Royce and Mr. Cohen.
Again, Commissioners, Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to do this. In 2008, the department did an organizational study of the entire department, late last year and early this year. In my professional opinion, I thought it was time to just, let's just look at the EMS side, since that's 86, 87 percent of our workload. So we specifically are only looking at the EMS deployment models. I reached out to Harold and TriData. I'd known Harold previously and known the scope of his work, and they agreed to come in. He made two or three stops here, had conferences with all stakeholders, including the hospital, including Dr. Harrington, and also the city manager, as well as the department. He observed some things. A lot of times, he actually, after dinner, would come out and sit down and interview some of the guys at the dinner table and kind of get a feel for the culture and everything else. So basically, these are his results. He's only going to go over the recommendations right now. He's open for questions as we go. I couldn't think of anyone that was more qualified. Harold comes from a fire-based organization around the Baltimore, Maryland area. His entire career, not only that, but he also has degrees in hospital administration. He sees both sides of this issue, of all issues. He looked at the entire department EMS was, not only transfers, but staffing models, good and bad, all the way across. Harold continues to maintain his certification as a paramedic, so he deeply has been across the country. He's seen a lot of different departments, and we really couldn't think of anyone that would be better off to kind of compare us to some of the things he's seen. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Harold.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much for having the trust and faith in TriData to allow us to do this. Sometimes when we have to go and do these presentations across the country, consultants are brought in because things aren't so good. That is not the case here. One of the things to understand is that the Salina Fire Department is providing excellent patient care and is providing excellent service to its citizens despite its challenges that are built in and which we will talk about in just a few minutes. As the chief said, just my basic background is in fire-based EMS. My degree's in healthcare administration, I'm board certified as a healthcare executive by the American College of Healthcare Executives. So I kind of see that side of it, too. I'm a professor for Capella University in their Department of Public Service Leadership in their graduate department, so I have the academic background also. And lately, the past eight or nine years, I've also had a practice in mediation and arbitration. And even as a non-attorney on the American Health Lawyers Association mediation and arbitration panel list, figured out that, and I'll be honest with you, I got into that because for the first 50 years of my life, I guess I was part of the problem. And if there anything that I'm granted after that, I'm going to try to be part of the solution and try and get people to work with each other to do it, and these are, we'll talk a little bit about that here. The Salina Kansas Fire Department is well managed. It is not overloaded with people, not overloaded with command-level officers, and it's good that the citizens and also the commission has kept good control over this because these things tend to get, in public safety, get out of hand. There are some challenges, though, that we would have to talk about and almost has to have to be, if I looked at it academically, as assumptions that are going on here. The first is EMS has to basically do three things for their citizens. They have to provide quality care, they've got to do it quickly, and they've got to do it cost-effectively. Now, any EMS system, any manager of an EMS system could do two of those three things without too much of a problem. Pick two, we can do it. The people, the talent you have here can. The trick is getting that third one, which is whatever the third one is, in which to do that. And you're doing pretty well so far, and we'll talk about a couple of specific instances. Geography is the continuing challenge, and it's something that you're not going to be able to change, is geography, that the city of Salina is on an island, and the area around that city is very dependent for emergency medical services on the city of Salina, and nobody really can change that. And that's going to be a challenge that you're going to have to continue to meet. And you can tell that, people ask about models, why don't private companies come in and do EMS for us? Well, they would have been here, as they were in lots of places, but because of the geographic setup, it's very difficult for commercial ambulances who need certain numbers of calls to break even, to even consider putting a lot of time with, or a lot of resources without it costing the city money to pay as a stipend, which wouldn't get you any better. We'll always talk about staffing levels, and we'll talk a little bit about that further. Education and training is continuing to increase, and one of the things we can look at when it comes to emergency medical services is that sometimes we're the victims of our failures, but other times we are the victims of our success. And that people are becoming more dependent on emergency medical services because of the reputation across the country and here in Salina. People like it. When I first got into consulting, when I finished my time as chief officer, I learned firsthand that a major city not too far from here said, "Our population's been cut 10% over the last decade. Show us how we can cut the budget 10%." Sounds logical to many people, but unfortunately, I had to show them the fact that even though the population decreased by 10%, the number of EMS responses increased by 9%. The moral of the story was that even in a, if a population inclines or it remains steady, it's not who leaves and who stays, and it's usually people who stay who have little, much less of a choice than those people who've gotten up and left here. So don't be surprised, and as you'll see in the report, that we're expecting the number of calls to go up even though the population's kind of leveled off for a little bit here in the city, to do that. More training and education, especially because Salina Fire Department is charged with doing many of the emergency transfers needing higher-level skills. And here's the bad news. Bad news is, as this continues to evolve, the federal government, CMS in particular, is starting to crack down on things like helicopter transport and things like reimbursing at the highest emergency level. Therefore, profit-producing organizations will be even less likely to want to venture into these types of places. And that was just announced this week, though we've been warning people about that for quite a while. How do we do this? Do you use firefighters? Do you have a third agency, et cetera? There are many, many possibilities. We think the one you're doing right now is probably the best choice for Salina with a little bit of interpretation or a little bit of enhancement. We're going to go over the 23 recommendations. Some of them, I'm not going to have to go through very much to take your time. Some of them, we're going to talk for a minute or two about, but one of the things I want everybody to understand, and one of the reasons you don't see in the presentation a concentration on the numbers, response times, et cetera, is that, first off, Salina's doing pretty well. Secondly, there are so many different interpretations of what those numbers mean, that unless they're way outside of the parameters that are followed in many places in the country, it's not something that you have to worry about right now. We talked about it in FPM at 1710. Understand, very few places, I mean, you can talk on your hands, count on your hands, the number of departments that meet that across the country. It's a nice thing to strive for, but that's what it is here. Our first priority, though, and if you notice, we did this for the report, is that to look at the data, it always needs to, here in Salina, needs to be adjusted responses based on a combination of 911 emergency and transfers. If you look just at the number of responses, it doesn't tell you much. Every transfer is kind of like two and a half to three EMS responses. So to really look at the level of what you're doing now and what to expect, we had to look at, and we recommend you continue to look at that based on adjusted response data, and you'll see several forecasts that I've made throughout the report there. One of the things by doing that, we found, is that we're pretty good at predicting the 911 calls, the numbers. They're going to go up a little bit, but our high-low predictions are real close. The inter-hospital transfers, that's a different story. There's a far-reaching level between what the highest number, what we think is going to happen, and what we believe is the lower-level number, and we wanted to be honest with you about that from the beginning. This surprised me. This is probably in 15 years, only the second time I've recommended keeping your EMS billing in-house. It's the first thing I usually run away from because of the risks, not only the economic risks, but the legal risks involved and the regulatory risks involved. But it's working pretty well here, folks. I couldn't justify a one-step answer that I use for everybody else in Salina. Your collection rates are excellent, especially for 911 calls. Most cities are happy with 40 to 50 percent. With computerization, it's going up a bit, but this is high-level. Remembering also that many of your calls don't even get up to bat because of the federal guidelines and the federal laws, really, for reimbursement. At this point, if there's no patient, there's no reimbursement. If there's no transport, there's no reimbursement. So a third of your patients, before we even get here, a third of your calls are not going to collect anything at this time. We'll talk about some future things in just a few minutes. This is a quick one about, since a lot of your transfers are from hospitals very far, basically it's the same thing as a rural transport, and I've recommended to the staff here that they at least look into it, kind of like apply for social security benefits. The first time, they're always going to be turned down, but if the chief and his staff believe it's worth doing and pursuing or getting an opinion from the TIG, CMS may be worthwhile, and it could bring in a little bit of money.
Harold, what's the agency that we would apply to to get that designation?
CMS, which is Medicare.
Okay, oh, okay.
They run Medicare and they federally oversee state Medicaid, and they're basically the ones here. Most of your reimbursements come from government organizations. And what's happened in the past few years is the private insurance companies have adapted their rules and said, "Oh, we don't want to pay you anymore. We'll just adapt their rules. We might not make you go after copays," but that's generally what we were, how it goes.
And is that, is that an application where we could, say, enlist our legislators to help present our lobby force, present our opinion?
That's a decision you're going to have to make. At this point, I think it needs to be internal, where your internal agency who speaks the language with them, besides the first "no" that you get.
Right, right, you just keep coming back.
And says, "Is this a possibility? Is it worth your time and energy? Is it worth putting this on the legislative docket to be considered or not?" And I don't know the answer right now. I couldn't call them. They won't speak to me. I don't have standing in which to get that information.
Do you have, do you have any idea about how that could, what that would translate into financially if we were to receive that designation? Just any kind of a ballpark about how that would?
I think about 5%.
Okay.
Which is still 5%.
Right, right, right.
If you already have everything in place to do it.
Right.
Again, though, it may be a drawn-out process.
Right.
And you all have to decide, and the chief and his staff will probably be making recommendations to say, "Should we pursue this or should we?" Recommendation four is a high-priority one, and that is maintaining the dual-role, cross-train status, that everybody, people say in the military, "Everybody's a rifleman or et cetera." Well, everybody in a department of this size should be qualified in areas of fire and emergency medical services. If we're talking about Kansas City or Detroit, other places, that's not necessary. Here, it is beneficial to do that, and paramedic qualification is probably the best direction to go in. Again, I mostly tell people, "You don't need that many paramedics," but here is not one of those places because of the uniqueness of some of the things that you do. What this also does is it reduces the overtime and FLSA liabilities because everybody is functioning in both capacities. If you had single-role providers, they get overtime at 40 hours, not 53, and that's significant here. You can't box yourself in. If you do run out of people, you can hire EMS-only employees, but it's one of those situations where eventually you'll have to make up and catch up to something you might have to do immediately, and that's why this recommendation is there and a high priority. This is a very quick thing. People will notice in the law, as with other professions, that a way to recertify is you just have to take the test every two or three years instead of continuing education. And our recommendation is that don't rely on doing that because that can really set you up to say, "Well, let everybody challenge the state test or the national registry," and this could really lead to some unnecessary HR problems, and, you know, the chief and his staff will give you much more information on that for there. One of the other ways to control some of the effort and cost here is looking at simulation technologies, especially those that are accepted both nationally and statewide for continuing education. While there are a certain number of hours that are required for continuing education, the EMS medical director basically makes the decision on, is this appropriate and what is needed to demonstrate proficiency? There are a lot of things now that we're sending, have to send people for one and two days' worth of training that experienced paramedics can knock out in four hours with simulator-type training. And it will reduce instructor overtime, and it may even get some of the continuing education done without having to continue to rely on premium pay, which always plagues firing EMS agencies across the country. So allowing the department to continue to do this is really going to be a very important thing to control, not only for best patient care, but using time wisely, and allowing the department to train people in things that are looking, are outcome-based.
I've got a question that might be for the hospital. I hate to put you on the spot, but it is like, or Dr. Davis here. The University of Kansas School of Medicine, do they use much simulation training or anything like that? I mean, would there be maybe an opportunity to, you know, to collaborate on any use of, like, if you have a virtual system set up, or, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know if that's something that's used all that much. You're a professor, so you would probably know.
As far as arranging collaboration, it occurs at Mr. Phelps' level, but certainly something to consider, yeah.
I didn't know how much virtual, I didn't know how much virtual, like, simulation or whatever, and I don't want to derail us on this topic.
Having seen some of the training these guys go through, we probably don't have all the stuff that they use. I'm just guessing. I mean, the purely paramedic training probably could overlap some, certainly an area that we're willing to explore. I'm not sure of the requirements.
Yeah. We've got plenty of simulation lineup.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I was just thinking in terms of, you know, building two, if we were talking about building two freestanding simulation labs, when, if we collaborated on something, we could get a really, an even better project, product for both the students and potentially EMS. I just thought, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there before the thought left my head.
And not to sidetrack us further, but the fire department does a real good job of tracking overtime and the source or the cause of the overtime, and 19% of our overtime is attributable to training alone. So not that we need to lessen the training, but if there's an opportunity to make that more efficient.
Effective.
And impact overtime, that might be an opportunity.
So we, this is one of the things, and we're really, I'm really seeing that the department is buying into this. This won't be a new phenomenon here, that they're kind of ahead of themselves. Probably one of the highest priorities, maybe one of the most controversial for several reasons, but what really needs to happen is that, as you'll notice, we don't recommend adding a tremendous number of people here, but another EMS medical officer at the 40-hour employee level can really do a lot to develop some of these collaborative efforts that were just met, and also collaborative efforts with the hospital and other organizations. And also, there are other things that this additional daytime EMS provider, EMS manager can do, especially when it comes to health and safety of fire and EMS providers throughout the department. As many of you are aware of, the increase in issues with mental illness, suicide, both those, some of those things, infection control management, having a health and safe one person there to do that, plus also do some of the EMS-related things, I think would be very advantageous. And if we look now at more of the increased regulation, one of them that just got released this week, I was just talking to the chief about it, is that CMS is going to require ambulance companies, providers, to present, provide a lot of data on what they actually do, and failure to do that can result in a 10% penalty in your collection. So somebody is going to have to do that. The billing person does the billing, she does fine, as I said, does a great job, but there's going to be more administrative work that needs to be, that needs to be done there. And having that administrator who can handle some of this situation may also help narrow some of the overtime that's very difficult to predict. This is a little bit different, and a lot of times, we haven't thought about that. We've seen across the country, and even, and we've seen in Salina, that more agencies other than the fire department are doing more extensive EMS. We talked about, you know, we talked about the narcotic crisis and Narcan interventions being done by police departments, school systems, et cetera, the national Stop the Bleed programs, et cetera. One of the challenges, though, is there is really no medical oversight of these programs in most places. And regardless of what anybody will tell you, this is the practice of medicine, and it needs to have medical oversight. And one of the best people to do that is the EMS medical director because that medical director has a quality management team that can do that. And one of the things is to designate that really a city EMS medical director for public safety, if you will. It's an important thing. It's good to get a jump on it. While a lot of the things that are done here, that are being done are touted as being benign and having low risk, it's not no risk, it's low risk. People who receive Narcan for narcotic overdoses, they'll start breathing again, which is what you want, but some of them have other medical problems that are precipitated from reversing a narcotic overdose, and anybody who really uses this, they need to be under direction. It must be physician-directed and also local quality management-directed. One of the things now that struck me as a little funny, and that was the current EMS supervisory personnel, the medical officers, are making the same money as a firefighter, a paramedic, three, and who don't supervise, or at least, and there's kind of something wrong with that. And also, one of the things that we see across the country in fire-based EMS is if there's not a good career path, people tend to go to the path of least resistance. Your EMS professionals do very well on fire suppression testing and those things, and tend to move there, which is not bad. It's still keeping them within, serving the city of Salina, but if you, we put a lot of time and effort into getting EMS supervisors to where they need to be, it would be a way to keep them without stunting their growth there. And that's one of the things that we believe needs to happen. Another high priority, and you'll see the two recommendations along with this, the first one is simple skills. How are you doing? What are your success rates, et cetera? Or for all the mechanical skills that our providers do, airway management, starting IVs, and any of those. Now, that's only the first step, but it's the step that's needed because that really measures output. How are we doing? Are people better? Are people worse off with EMS? And depending on the type of emergency, we can, we could get into some good arguments about it. But this would be the first step, and it would be needed. The new reporting system that your EMS system is now using will do a lot to take care of this, but it's something that does have to be done because it's this next thing, moving from outputs to outcomes. And that deals with stroke, sepsis, trauma, other very specific things determined by the medical director, and that is, that's also part of J-code, the commission's measurement from the hospitals, because your hospitals are not only responsible for what happens for people inside the hospital, there is a responsibility from time of symptom onset all the way through discharge, and that's even after rehab. So the logical choices, everybody needs to work together and be ready to talk about where are the strengths, where are the weaknesses. You can add all kinds of procedures to EMS. You can add all kinds of MRIs and advanced standing, et cetera, but if you don't figure out where the exact problem is, you'll never get to, are we doing the right thing or not? Are you investing well? Are you investing well in the EMS system, or is the situation somewhere else? And what can be done better? Are we making a difference? It's continued to be asked there. We're looking at recommending that all of our, the EMS medical officers and the, or even to act in that position, that they be fully required to act as a paramedic, to be qualified as a paramedic three. And this is also in line with the recommendations for reclassification of the medical officer. We did not make that recommendation lightly. We did not make that saying, let's do the same thing we're doing now and just pay somebody more to do it. It's going to be a combination, it would be a combination, better recognition for what people do, and expectation of what they need to start doing for people to move up into that area. It's not a free thing, it's not a reclassification with no other duties added. So I wanted to make sure everybody, that I presented that appropriately to everybody. Also, all the medical, to promote to medical officer, everybody that wants to do that has to have, would have to have the critical care, paramedic intervention. If you remember, I talked earlier, and I said that there's a lot of uniqueness to the system. Well, there are a number of patients that need that extra paramedic, advanced paramedic skill for a long-term transport. Now, with CMS even tightening up reimbursement further for helicopter transport, skills may become even more important to have available for that. So basically, the practice is starting, and again, it's just a logical requirement of making it required to do that. Here's another one that, as somebody who's been involved in firing EMS for four years, I can tell you is the not-so-gentlemanly part of this, and that is, for the, really one of the first times in years, EMS is in a competition for talent, to get people here, to get people to stay here, to have people already required, because back, EMS started with the, using the philosophy of the old military-industrial complex. Come with nothing, we'll cut your hair, we'll give you a uniform, and we'll teach you everything you need to know. And when firing EMS providers were making 400 bucks a month, et cetera, everybody said, sure, okay, we'll send you to training, we'll do all that, no big deal. However, again, as our profession has sophisticated more, think about some of the other professionals that you hire, how many of them get their basic academics after they get to work? And now that Kansas is one of the, just a couple of states that require an AA degree level for paramedics, it's really already there. It's not going to be anything that, oh my God, to do that. So you should take advantage of those people. Hire the qualified people. Hire the people that will get from door to street as quickly as possible. If you want to save a lot of money on overtime, et cetera, a year's worth of training, having to send somebody four in backfill, will save a significant amount of money. At least, the potential is there. And so, this priority should be there. And it's going to take some very aggressive recruiting. It's not just ads in the newspaper, that a lot of municipal jobs are done, it's going to be going out after the talent that's out there. And again, you'd ask me when I came in, I'd be honest with you, I'd say, well, usually one chief has an agreement with the other, don't mess in my area, I won't mess in yours, don't take my people. But this is becoming more of a headhunting type of situation. I don't know everybody's background, but if you've worked with corporate headhunters, they'll spend up to a third of the first year's salary of a person to recruit them. Now, I'm not suggesting that here. That's not going to be necessary, but recruiting the right people, good people for the citizens, is going to have to be a, an aggressive type of thing. And resources are going to need to be allotted, and it won't be a tremendous amount, I don't believe, but if a class at a community college, paramedics is graduating, I want somebody from, I'd want somebody from your agency there handing out applications, since we're able, since the city has kind of advanced the, allowing fire and police to do that. I would, when national conferences are nearby, go at them. It's where the talent is, and it brings people with experience. Traditional methods just aren't going to do it anymore. Is there a shortage? I don't know. There's a shortage, though, if you don't recruit them. If they're not here in Salina, that's the answer, then yes, there is. It's going out and doing, and doing that. To get some better relationships involved with the 911 Center and Communications, these EMS medical officers can help by taking some of them out for just a short ride or, it'll reduce the cost of continuing education. And the people who are in one of the most under, underappreciated areas, and that's the 911 Center, really can see how their efforts make things happen. I can tell you from my experience across the country, that lots of people build new fire stations, hire new people, throw more equipment at it, but if they don't, if they don't incorporate what's happening in 911, the problems never get fixed. So it's being able to do that and understand that. And it will also help with some of the other issues, and then, again, that your EMS medical director should be medically overseeing priority dispatch, because it's the practice of medicine. If you want to break it down very simply, folks, if somebody lists you problems that you're having, and you have to make the determination that leads to treatment, that's the practice of medicine, and it needs to be overseen, and needs to, there needs to be adequate quality management programs. One of the things that we hear in the past that is really a little outdated is, the 911 Center uses a medical priority dispatch program, which is a good one. It's a CAN program, there's three of them across the country, they're the big ones. But when they came out about 30 years ago or so, the warning was, don't make any changes because we can't insure you or defend you if there's a problem. That's an old-fashioned way of doing things, before there were medical directors, before there were trained personnel. The EMS medical director, and also the fire chief, and the police chief, and the dispatch supervisor should be able to do these things without having to be too afraid of these legal issues that have to be respected, but we're talking about 21st century practice right now. And again, this is just a continuation of that last one, and will allow you to customize your operation for the city of Salina. The 911 Center needs to keep accurate measure of how often no unit available occurs. I'm giving you some pro forma things here. It's relatively low, but unfortunately, with Salina, low is not good enough, because you have nobody else here to do this. So we, the, and I know they do it in the police department, with their police officers, they, the dispatch center told me. So this accurate record, you really get a grasp on how often the city is out of people, out of units, there. And there's plenty of backup that the fire chief can employ and has, but it'd be nice to know exactly where should we, where should we be here with this recommendation. The 911 Center, we need to look at this from a different perspective, and it, there really needs to be one repository for official data from the city. What is the official data that says, this is our numbers for call-response times, these are our numbers for responses, here are the numbers in seasonality, et cetera, and that really needs to be your 911 center. But it also has to be combined with the ability to have the appropriate access to those organizations who really need it, and not to be something hidden, or something that needs a lot of massaging, if you will, of the data. And it's not here, just here, every place that I go to, much of my time is spent on getting the data into a position where I can analyze it and report something back to you to answer the questions that are there. So this is a team effort that we have to do.
If I could jump in there for just a second, I can put the chief on the spot a little bit, but if you would, speak a little bit to what contributes to a no unit available, and how we try to anticipate that and claim for that, just to give a little bit more context to how we're currently operating.
Well, no unit available, first off, starts off with an ambulance unit, and that doesn't mean no one's going to come to your call, okay? That means that all four units are out, assigned calls are on a transfer. The next unit that would respond would be one of the engine companies, which does carry BLS or basic, and in some cases, an actual paramedic may be on that, that engine, depending on staffing that day, but you wouldn't have access to ALS equipment, advanced life support. So what Harold was referring to was, we started getting, and probably in the last six months, a report every month from the 911, from Wayne, that gives me a, just a total count of how many times an actual call came in where there was no medic unit available to respond to that call. And it's growing a little bit. It started off with about five or six times a month, and I think the last one will be 11 times a month. Now, keep that in mind, that's not to say that a unit will be dispatched, usually an engine company, however, there probably going to have to be a little bit of a delay on a medical company, or on an ambulance. A med unit may be delivering a patient at the hospital when that comes in, and they hear it, and obviously, they, they want to deliver the patient to get back there, and they'll, and they'll respond. Or they may be coming back from a transfer, but they weren't physically able to make that 911 call when it came in to dispatch at that time.
When we do transfers out of town, does that take one of our four units out of the equation?
Yes.
Do we ever, what's that?
I said, with a disclaimer, and I'll, I'm going to, I'm going to put medical officer Jaeger on the spot, but medical officer Jaeger is kind of one of our shift medical officers and all, let him explain to you how transfers come in and how they...
It sounded like you had more of a question for that.
Well, my other one would, I guess, might, to follow that up, would we ever allow two units to be on a transfer call at the same time?
It can't happen, but it'd become, working with the hospital, finding out the status of the patient, if it's a life and death type situation, absolutely, and we can shut down a fire truck, we'll instantly try and hire back off-duty crews to fill that in. Doesn't always happen, depends on the time. Three in the morning, it's hard to get guys in, sometimes you just don't hear the page go off. It can happen, but we fight pretty hard to prevent that. Anytime we can schedule a transfer, get a crew off-duty already lined up to take it when we can, but as one comes in, that does take one of those trucks out of service.
And then, let's talk a little bit about callback and mandatory callback, and how you tackle...
We operate at a 25-person minimum staffing. Anything below 25, the unit's going to have to come off track. Two of our shifts have 27, one has 26 assigned, so two people are off, usually on a signed leave or scheduled leave. Someone calls in sick, someone's injured, we're in an overtime situation. Like medical officer Jaeger mentioned, if it's a non-emergent transfer, we'll, we'll put a page out to see if guys want to come back in and take the transfer. If it's an emergency transfer, there's no FTE, we're going, we're taking that patient to wherever they need to go. If another one comes in that's an emergency, can't wait on people to come back in, then what we'll do is, we will shut down an engine company and take that crew and man a reserve ambulance, that's one of the reasons we maintain seven, we have seven ambulances. And there has been even times when some of our staff officers, due to just, it gets crazy sometimes, where every single unit's unavailable on a call. Chief Pearson, Chief Grozlin, our training chief, who maintain their paramedic certifications, have manned, usually a short period of time, an hour, 45 minutes, until everyone comes back. Usually, my expectation is, when we're in that level, that we're kind of depleting the city, is that most of the officers, and especially the paramedics, their ears are a little bit more, and they understand, and the, there's, we've got to get back in service as quickly as we can.
And then, shift change, we've got mandatory callbacks, depending on...
Yeah, if we drop below the 25-person staffing levels, and we don't get any voluntary overtime, then there's what's known as forced time or mandatory overtime, which means basically, someone who ever, there's a rotating list, then that person that's due up will stay over to maintain the minimum staff.
Does that happen, excuse me, does that happen very often?
It depends. It depends on, you know, we had two captains that were off on fairly long-term injuries a while back, and so, at the officer level, it's happened, I'll let, come to the H border, headquarter, Chad, you want? Percentage-wise or often-wise, or?
We hire overtime quite often, and I'd say, I don't know, once a week, we can halfway enough force someone to work, so our overtime is pretty common. I think the other day, we had five or six in one day, so it does happen quite often.
And is physician-specific? There may be times when it has to be a paramedic.
So do we consider ourselves to be understaffed that we're using overtime? Would we be better, be better off having more full-time?
Obviously, if we had more FTE, full-time...
I mean, that's a question, I mean, there comes a point, but I mean...
Well, in all honesty, that was kind of going to be my conclusion, but maybe it was a little naive in going into the EMS deployment study, but I was trying to get an answer to that question. And I think it's more complicated than that, which shouldn't come as any surprise, but I commend the fire department for the amount of data they kept, and we've shared with you previously, that public safety overtime, police and fire are the things that are off on our budget. Everything else is tracking pretty much on budget at the moment, but because of the data that the fire department's able to track, I mentioned that training is 19% of that overtime, EMS transfers are 12% of that overtime, and then, covering for sick leave is 40% of that overtime, and covering for vacation is 10%. So those four categories are the vast majority. So chief and I've had conversations about staffing levels, or whether that could address it, but it's a little bit more complicated than that, in that if you bring on a person or two, but you're, you're calling in for sick, and EMS transfers still swamps that number, that, that staffing level may not be able to be consistently applied to enough benefit. But that, coming out of this EMS deployment study, and some of the work that we're doing through CPI, that's the question we're trying to answer.
Well, and I'm guessing that some point, that some of the, some of the staff doesn't mind overtime, but again, if you're, if it's happening too often, it becomes a morale issue also.
Absolutely, and that's my, that's my biggest concern, especially at the paramedic level. I mean, obviously, these guys are on the top of the game, and you don't want to burn them out, and you don't want to work them so much that, you know, I mean, critical thinking and things like that.
Well, and if, what Harold is saying about other places being predatory, you know, we're liable to lose some of our staff also, if some other places can, can hire and meet the needs of our current staff.
Yeah, and one of the things we identified in those numbers is, in 2008, for whatever reason, one of our shifts was, through attrition, someone had left and was never replaced. So two of our shifts have been running with 27, 27, and one with 26. And keep in mind, with 25 is the bare minimum of daily staffing. So any injury, any sickness, anything like that, and you have two people off, you're into forced overtime. So just getting us back to across the board, even people, not to mention if we did add, yeah, the flexibility would be, but surely, it would help a little bit.
How many, how short are we currently in terms of our staffing?
As of today, we have three new recruits that began today, will come out December 20th. That currently puts us at one down of what we're authorizing. However, we have a retirement in December, we have one on year deployment with the military, and we have another retirement coming up in March. So by March, we could be three to four down again, even with these three that have just been...
So our shift, we allow two...
So our shift, we allow two people to be on vacation, which shouldn't cause any overtime. And right now, every day we have two people gone, it causes one overtime. So that's where shift two is staffing at the time. So every day, we allow two people, it shouldn't cause overtime, we're hiring one person every shift.
And you'll see that in the numbers I gave to the senior manager, you'll see one shift is really good on their overtime because they're fully manned and whatever, and the other two shifts are kind of shooting it. And again, it's, I call it a local issue, because if the two, long-term injuries to those two captains wouldn't have occurred, which we don't know when it's going to happen or not, the numbers probably wouldn't have been that so. It's a guessing game. You don't know. But having that flexibility of plugging someone in helps. I mean, I'll solve it, but it helps.
And at that two-down scenario, sick leave, injury, training, EMS transfers, are immediately overtime or some sort?
Yeah, so as soon as you get someone to call and say, next shift, you're automatically, that's another one. That's another, you know...
And that's what we found on the numbers that I gave to senior manager, was the training is, okay, there's some specific types of training that require, you know, hour for hour, minute for minute, to keep your certification. So if we tie some of our paramedics up in some classes that are a four or six-hour class, we've got to hire back someone to fill that spot while they're in that class to maintain their certification. There's no way out of it that we can do that. And that's if that class is here in town. If we have to send them somewhere to get that, then that's just that much.
More often than not, the EMS training overtime is the employees off-duty, going somewhere on their day off, out of town, or even in town, and attending that training. And they're the employees actually being paid the overtime most of the time.
Is that like a once a year or twice a year?
No, it's fairly often. So in the reported, that Harold compiled, it shows how many continuing education hours, especially for the paramedics, that they have received every two years. So several, and then on top of that, the critical care certified paramedics are even more in addition to that, that's more specialized training that oftentimes isn't available locally to receive some of that education for continuing education. So they attend classes, national, both state and national conferences throughout the year. One of the things in the report that I have to point out to you is, I did a staffing calculation, and I added up all of vacation time used, sick leave, et cetera. And I have to tell you that Salina is one of the more efficient places out. Looking at those numbers, you really can't find sick leave abuse or blue flu or anything like that, that is common in some departments. It's not happening here. So that part of it is, you can't blame that. People are, appear to be keeping, taking their jobs seriously, and are dedicated to not abusing those, taking those mental health days or things that affect the cities.
First of all, I just want to put in a plug for taking a mental health day. If you need a mental health day, take a mental health day. But I guess, and maybe I'm asking the same question that Commissioner Hoppe did, but in a slightly different way, is there any contemplation of maybe 27 is not our magic number, that it should be 28? Just given, like you said, the vacation, the extended absences and stuff like that, that we should maybe aspire to getting up, instead of the 27, to a 28 or a 29 number?
This is the beginning of that conversation. That's why we did the deployment study, that's why we're looking at the numbers. I'm certainly open to it. Chief Royce and I have had conversations, but to really do it right, we're going to go back and model it a little bit. If we just add to and find out that because of the variable nature of the loading, it really hasn't been effective, and we've just increased staffing and been inefficient while we're doing it. I think it certainly merits looking at, I think we really need, I think we've got enough data that we could go back and kind of model based on the last year and say, if we had additional staffing, what that might look like. I mean, the goal is to be able to fund it at straight time, rather than time and a half, and realize a break-even or even some savings possibly. The last thing we want to do is be overstaffed, but it doesn't fit the loading that we see.
And it used to be 28 per day, per shift. The downturn in '08, through attrition, we never replaced those, they brought us back up.
And I would tell you that the overtime numbers, just the cost, are certainly large enough to get my attention and merit the conversation. But when you look at sick leave and vacation leave and training, I don't know that you can, additional staffing, we'll be able to cover that very well. We have to really dig into the numbers.
Yeah, because I mean, I'm just looking at, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, but you know, obviously, education and training, continuing education was what, like 20% of that? So even if you could get that number down through some sort of, you know, local virtual simulation or something, you're still talking about the biggest number there was covering for people on vacation, wasn't it? It was stuff like the, yeah, sick leave and vacation, like 40%.
Sick leave's pretty consistent, and that might work.
Yeah.
Ebs and flows.
So that there's no misconception, you are getting what you pay for. I'll ask them, you're ranked where in the state? As far as best EMS or...
I see in the...
Kind of have awards that kind of indicate that. Because I would be very remiss to mess with their quality in their training.
But the flip side is, the busier we get, the more transfers we make, everything, when you're taking people physically away from being able to get to that training, just because of the workload, then it compounds itself. It was only 70 hours, and if you, Harold's predictions, you know, anywhere 2% to 3% per year, that's going to keep going. Our staffing model's the same from 2005, or someone help me out here?
2005, we made a full line.
What?
2005 is when we made the most significant change to staffing.
So we literally, you know, for almost 15 years, maintained the call volume with what we have now.
You said 10% was vacation, our overtime budget on vacation?
Um, yeah, I think that's right.
In our SOGs, you know, we're not supposed to have overtime for vacation, and that's what's occurring now, is, you know, sick leave is going to cause vacation, or cause overtime. But vacation or personal leave shouldn't ever cause overtimes, but now they're, you know, they're causing it. So that's, that's a number, is kind of a critical number that you can stop, is that 10%.
And from what I know about how you schedule it, I mean, you spread it out and...
Yeah, that's what we're doing that way, is to try and prevent your time. So now, being short, now those vacation days are causing overtime, which they shouldn't.
And I'm not begrudging sick leave by any means, but that is 40%. And so that's where I start to wonder whether additional staffing can respond to the sick leave as it occurs. But I don't want to, I don't want to leave anybody with the impression that we're not open to that conversation. The numbers certainly call it into question, and I think we've got the resources by way of data and by way of staff expertise to really dive in.
I think there's a comment. On the vacation side of things, like Captain Easter said, all three shifts are starting their 2020 vacation, or picking days in 2020 that they won't be able to take vacation. So one of the few, probably the only department in the city, other than the police department, and by sure, by far, employer-wise, that employee can't just walk in, or call tomorrow and say, hey, can I, I won't want to take vacation anymore. That doesn't occur because of our staffing model.
Yeah, you just don't allow it to overlap because of the staffing schedule.
Very seldom can someone just call in and say, hey, can I take vacation my next duty date? Because it's already pre-scheduled, there's already probably two people on vacation that shift.
And without looking at the personnel, I'm guessing that the number of weeks you get for vacation is correlated to the experience that the person has.
Seniority.
And seniority, and I see some seniority sitting out here, so it's kind of been, as being in management for, you know, it's kind of that saying, the more people you have, the more you need, because that, those vacation weeks increase, and so you have to backfill that. And it does become a complicated formula sometimes, so...
It is. And just real quick, I'll get back to Harold. Commissioner Hay made a comment last January during our performance analysis, he flat-out asked me, I remember, do we have enough people? And my answer, no offense, wasn't political, but my answer is, we have as many people as this governing body is willing to support. And that's, you know, you can meet, that could be a yes, that could be no. You know, we won't ever turn additional people down.
Well, obviously, we have budget constraints, but safety to the, to the public is one of our main goals, so we'll have to review this, obviously.
How hard is it to fill your positions? I mean...
It's not as easy as it used to be. We started three today, and we only interviewed four. It's across the country, it's across Kansas, I shouldn't say the country. Actually, we've seen everything from the Kansas City departments offering lateral transfers, where someone of five years can go into, from Lenexa to Overland Park, boom, get five years of vacation, five year, that's how desperate it's getting. We've seen departments, I call them a bounty, bounty, which means if you don't stay for five years, you owe them money back if you leave and jump to another department. We're so fortunate that we, as a department, are not being used as a stepping stone for other, other departments. It's just, it's, the Hutchinson Community College, who kind of is our feeder pool, is seeing a decrease of applicants in their program, kids are just not getting into this anymore. They're just saying that either it's too hard physically, or with the economy at 3% unemployment, they're going to go do something else.
And that goes back to recommendation number four. I had a question, if I can go back, I think it was four. And it talked about, you know, you need to also be fire and EMS certified both. Is that a deterrent to having individuals that want to? Because I know, in the old day, you either wanted to be a fireman or you wanted to be an EMS. Is that a, is that a, I mean, does that put a constraint on our hiring some?
Not as much as ours, it can. I mean, you know, the larger departments, Pika, Wichita, don't do ALS, they do EMT. You have to be a basic EMT to go to any fire department in the state of Kansas. So that's, that's bare minimum. You don't have to be a paramedic. A lot of times, we'll send our people through paramedics, where like Harold mentioned in his, one of his recommendations was trying to recruit paramedics, so they've already got that coming into our system, they can help us.
So when we hire now, the expectation is that they will become a paramedic?
Unnecessarily.
I mean, that was one of the recommendations, but...
We encourage it or hope for that, at least some, at least a percentage of those new hires when we get in. But we've hired people that are, that were paramedic certified, no fire experience personally. We've got a guideline that allows us to do that. Brandon DeBrockwood over here, he's one, he's an example of that. We hired him here, he was a paramedic, fairly new paramedic, no fire experience, and he has progressed through the ranks to become a very efficient employee and has grasped all of that. So it's, it's possible to go that route, and I think Harold's got some information on that.
It's a faster track. If they're already a paramedic, that saves us, and not only, but in expense of an 18-month, 14-month program.
Well, and I think his wording was prefer, or show preference for those.
If we can get Mr. Cohen through his presentation, because that part is going to become a head office.
Thanks, Mayor. These were just recommendation 20, it is just some additional things based on Table 18 in the report, that is looking at some other ways to measure time, so you could more accurately measure how things work. You can measure things at whole time, but also, it would be nice to know, how long is it turnaround that the hospital's taking? How long is it really taking, you know, people on the scene to do what they have to do? And again, the 911 center and the chief will be, will be getting together to do these kind of things. I wanted to make sure to get through this one, because this is, this is the only way I had to look at it, but every, all the positives that I've found in the city of Salina, with the fire department, with the medical community, this is one that we need to talk about, and it's not a secret, and they call it the 800-pound gorilla. And that's the issue leading to, that has to do with EMS transfers. And I'm not going to sit here and try to throw knives or blame people. A lot of it is circumstance, but it really is something that needs to be looked at. And one of the recommendations that I did make is to see if the hospital, and also the fire department, would be interested in doing some what we call negotiated rulemaking, consensus-based rules concerning EMS transfers, and not only agreeing to it, but agreeing to memorialize that into their agencies, that the same transfer policy the fire department has, it's hanging up in the stations, is the same policy that the emergency department has, and it's hanging up in the emergency department, and it's signed by everybody involved. So there's, at least intent-wise, there's nothing that's going to say, well, that's not what the fire department wanted, that's not what the hospital did. It is within a couple days to get a group together and intensely work on something where it can be mutually agreed upon. And then, obviously, it would have to go through things like legal review from the city, and for the hospitals, and CEO level, and political level review, but just to say, all right, this is what we need to do. Here it is. Both of the players have agreed to it. Let's move forward. It's not going to all be great, there's going to be different, there's going to be issues, but it's just to move forward. And really, this kind of thing, does it work all the time? No, it doesn't, but it does quite a bit. And I've spent a lot of time in the last few years doing these kind of things. It would be easy to do if people were willing to do that. And it's going to set a basis for future progress here. Conflict is okay, you're going to have it, it's the ability to control and reduce it and make it work for you. So that's one of the things that I think can follow up from this. And I'll be in communication with the chief, and you don't have to use me, but to do it, if there's somebody else, everybody agrees to saying that, hey, I think this person can help us out, that's fine too. But I think that's the way it needs to go right now, or else the conflict will continue. And it doesn't do anybody any good.
Harold, I think there was a comment here.
I did. Harold, medical officer Soper, I just wanted to make sure that the commissioner's aware that recommendation one, and talking about transfers again, inter-hospital transfers take two, two and a half to three hours. That's just our transfers to Wichita. It's about a three-hour transfer. We do also go to Kansas City. That's a seven or eight-hour transfer that even puts a bigger wrench into our staffing complications that we have. So just want to make sure, we don't just go to Wichita, we do also go to Kansas City emergently. We, so that throws a problem into our staffing. Now, we do also go to Lincoln, Nebraska, Omaha, Nebraska. Most of those are non-emergent transfers that we are able, we fill through hiring off-duty personnel. But those emergent transfers at Kansas City Children's Mercy, Katy Med Center, we had one Friday, that put a lot of complications out there for us with staffing. So just want to make sure you're all aware of those too.
And I would tell you that there are lines of communication, there's ongoing conversation. Usually, it's in a deep grief scenario, admittedly, three in the morning or whatever, you know, middle of the night, hour you want to pick, is an awkward time for everybody involved, hospital, doctor, patient, and our medical officers. And our medical officers are kind of in an awkward position, trying to get all that balance and provide good service. So there probably is value in kind of proactively having some of those conversations and trying to get it all, get everybody on the same page even more than we are today. I'm mindful of the regional nature of the hospital, what they're trying to do, and we are on an island, and we're all trying to figure out how to get through this together somehow.
Well, and I know that you mentioned, Harold, a couple of issues that were kind of driving the number of transfers that were being made, and one of which was a nursing shortage, which is obviously, hopefully going to be rectified in the next couple of years with having Kansas Westland get reaccredited and the University of Kansas turning out graduates. The other one...
And VOTAs.
And VOTAs, right, right. I didn't mean to, didn't mean, but so at any rate, three...
Hypothetically, we'll be in better shape than we were before, but we're still on the window to where it's producing graduates.
Right. But like, the 800-pound gorilla component, to me was, something that stood out to me was the decision by the Salina Orthopedic Clinic not to participate and be on staff at Salina Regional. And I think that you had mentioned that as one reason that, you know, we are now having to send some orthopedic patients that in the past might have been able to be cared for. Locally, we're having to make that investment to send them elsewhere. Did I, did I phrase that correctly in my character? Isn't that properly?
And I think I need to let Joel add in there, that there's some things that have happened.
I'm not Tom Manning.
Yeah. I decided to go ahead and jump in on that 800-pound... I decided to go ahead and jump in on that 800 pound gorilla.
Some changes are occurring in staffing.
That will allow us to keep that in-house.
Allowing people to, but the issue is if it's not, if it's not for this issue, if it's not for this issue, it'll be another issue to create that conflict and setting up a system of how do we take care of this? You know, getting together and say, these are rules that I can live with, the hospital can live with, these are rules that the fire department can live with and taking less, fewer time on people things that are quite manageable.
You know, I see one common denominator here in the whole thing and it's all comes back to staffing. No matter how you look at it, it all comes back right on top of the staffing. I know I'm only a short timer here now, only got a very few, few hours left before the election and there's going to be, somebody else is going to be stepping in to take my place. But, you know, in the two years I've been here and visiting with Mike and visiting with Jason the same way, their answer was, their answer was to my question was, if you want something, as a commission, if you want something, we'll try to make it happen. And you know, public safety is number one. I don't care how you look at it, public safety and the police department, the fire department is number one. And if it takes, no matter what it takes, if we feel that we need more staffing, then we need to get more staffing. If we're running short on staff and having to do so much overtime, you know, I've been in that situation where overtime, overtime can be overbearing and it can, and it really can, it can fry on you sometimes. So, I mean, I still look at it the same way. If, if we need staff, then we need to take a look at that and do what we can to make public safety number one. Same way with the, you know, with the radio system. I mean, you know, that's part of public safety too. So we need it, we need to get it.
I agree with Joe. I think that's a non-negotiable and, you know, whatever studies that we need to do to find out how we need to get to the best place staffing wise. I mean, I feel like, yeah, this has been an ongoing conversation since I've been on the commission and, okay, we acknowledge we're short-staffed, so what are we going to do about it? And, you know, what's the optimum, what's the optimum level? But we need, not doing something isn't, isn't an option. We need to get up to staff.
The negotiated rules though, keep you from getting in a position, you have more staff, well, people's will then feel, oh, we can transfer whenever we want because they can handle it now. So I think you still have to have the rules of engagement.
Oh, I agree. Oh, absolutely.
Because sometimes it's a little too easy to transfer patients.
I think it's a combination of knowing what your load is so you can staff to it, staffing and load balancing. And if we can figure those things out, then I think we can make some noticeable progress.
I'm going to have, go and get to.
This is it.
No, well, I thought it was 23, 22?
And that is basically, 22 is the answer to how do we keep people available to make sure they're in the area and are available to come into work when they're needed, especially for transfers or to take over if a unit is out of town and there is a lot of activity for 911. And that, that's having a compensated one call. If there are no transfers, you haven't wasted, the employee hasn't wasted the day. And the number there is just a suggestion, that'll be taken care of by, you know, with the people, if the concept is okay to do that. Because as most of you know, lots of fire and EMS people have other jobs and how do we keep them here and available? That may be a way to, to take a look at. And also, the absolute final thing here is that, as we talked about earlier, what we said was not collecting any money if you don't take a patient to the hospital. And that's a 1960s version of what's going on here. There are people that can be transferred to other facilities, maybe even treated and released on the scene, the old military medic model that had to do that. And that's, that is really taking hold nationwide and what I'm saying is taking hold and being looked at. There are a couple of things that you should be looking at when it comes to that. Again, this is still going to be a slow process. There's still other things that need to be done before we get here, but the federal government as the payer is finally getting to that point. And logically, it's counterintuitive to take everybody to an emergency department when perhaps another, their personal physicians, clinics or specialty agencies can better handle their emergency or urgency at that time. And that, Mayor, sir, is my last part of the recommendation. I want to thank everybody. This was a great study for me to do because it really was encouraging to see everybody. And one of the things I'm going to point out as my last thing, you heard from several of your captains here, your company level officers that are very much engaged in what's going on here. Several, a couple of them are involved, I recognize a couple are involved with the 911 center and trying to get them to increase their efficiency, even though it's not really part of their job to do, but they've taken it upon themselves, everything doesn't have to come from the chief's office or the deputy chief's office, that your, your line leaders are taking the lead on a lot of this. And I really think it's worth mentioning and reflects well on everybody in your department. And I'll take, Mayor, at your discretion, sir, anything else I could answer?
There may be someone here for a 3:45 open forum, give us about two or three minutes. Since Mr. Phelps and Dr. Freeland are here, obviously you're part of the equation towards resolving, there are needs to be resolved. Just give you some time for the floor.
I think we've had some constructive dialogue and I think that whatever conflict this presents, as I don't feel it that way, I think that we'd be happy to sit down and come to a win-win at any point. I know Rochelle's been intimately involved in all of this and I think at the core of our interest is patient care, so I think that the core of this group is patient care, so how we can overlap and do that, I think that's a good thing.
Joel told me we're going to Dairy Queen, that's how I had it.
I think what Joel said, I mean, it's all about taking care of people. Unfortunately, it's hard to predict and plan when people will need to be transferred and when they're going to get critically ill or injured. Try and plan the best you can and I think we can sit down and do that. It maybe will address a big portion of the problem, but as long as there's that unpredictability, I think everybody's got to go into the understanding that there's going to be times where no matter how hard and fast the rules are, there's going to be exceptions to it. So, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't sit down and try.
Good. We will pick this up in just a second. Is anyone here who is here to talk about anything else? In that case, we have until five, until 3:55, so ask away or it's coming away. And there, any comments, questions, concerns from the folks that we've been talking about for the last hour and a half? I don't want you to feel like you're invisible in the room because I've been talking about you. Any comments? I don't know what your gag rules are for.
Chief Royce, on your earmuffs.
Stay within the confines of your rules.
One question that came to mind when I was thinking about the overtime issue is, did we separate out overtime when we were attempting to staff the transfer truck? We proved over and over again, I don't know if you know what the transfer truck was, but at certain times when we were anticipating several transfers or 1-1 transfer, we would hire a transfer truck. And that would be a dedicated crew, separate crew hired as overtime to people to stay for 24 hours to take transfers. And we proved that we were very poor at predicting that when that would occur. And some of the overtime that was included, I don't know if it's included in that, those numbers? So, okay. So that was my question, was that included in it?
We've done that several times as an example, whenever the hospital would let us know they were going on diversion or something or snowstorm or something. We pre-up and hire an extra crew, give them enough time, we put an extra truck, that was a transfer, that'd be the first transfer truck only in K-5, or I'm sorry, four in the county. So we've done, and it's like, medical officer, Todd said, it's hard to predict. It's like the, the one, the sure time you do it, nothing happens. Then when you don't do it, the world, you know, comes to it.
So on a transport, you go in one direction loaded and you're coming back the other way unloaded?
Yes.
So is there, forgive me if I'm naive about this, but would the patient ever be served better to be in the hospital for a little longer period of time and have somebody from another location come and make that transfer? Is there any collaboration that goes on with other EMS in other locations?
Have been times we've requested joining counties.
Sure. The tough part is, as Harold alluded to, the resources available other than what's here locally. So there is transfer, another transfer service intended and the hospital does, on occasion, they have had to utilize other services, whether that's based on the census being to the point where the only choice is that the hospital has to transfer patients because they're, the community is overwhelming the hospital. They have just as big of issues sometimes with staffing because of, they can't predict how many people are going to get sick and when they're going to get sick or injured. So it becomes difficult to predict, just like Dr. Freeland said, when the transfers are going to happen. Other agencies that are outside the county and those are, most of those are coming from Omaha or away at times to be able to come in and do that service. So there are times that, that we can, even, you know, if it's a late night transfer, we can, the medical officers when they receive that call, can, can we wait till tomorrow morning? And more times than not, that is, is becoming the one more of the case, that that patient can be held overnight, it may be, and then we still take that transfer first thing in the morning and get them where they need to be. I think most of the guys in the room will echo, at least in the past we have, that 911 is our priority and making that commitment to citizens, but so is just as big of a commitment to ensure that our citizens, if they need a higher level of care that can't be provided, that that's just as important to get them to that, that level of care that they need. So as Arden said, we do what we can to get those patients to get that higher level of care whenever it's necessary.
Medical officers have the discretion and authority to decline any transfer usually that it's based on a safety issue for our people and for the patient. They're going to Kansas City, snowstorm, weather related, something like that. It's never, I mean, we take that into consideration.
First I thought you were going to ask if they could bring somebody back when it pays off base.
This isn't Old Dominion, Larry, they don't backload, but anyway.
Any other? Mr. Cohen, thank you very much for enlightening.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Look forward to the brain trust helping us get this set. For those of you who don't know, Dr. Freeland is our new medical director at the hospital. I'm sure everybody here reads the newspaper, this is him in the flesh. Thanks, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, man.
And guys, before you leave, thank you for all you guys do. We really do appreciate it.